Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats and welcome to this, the mayoral and city council inauguration today on December the 4th. I'm John Malzone, your emcee, and on behalf of the city of Fayetteville, we are very pleased to welcome you to this wonderful event located here on the campus of Fayetteville State University, the UNC Systems' representation here in the great all-American city of Fayetteville. And is this a beautiful place or what? And the Broncos are celebrating their 150th anniversary this year, and that, let's hear some Bronco pride. So now at this time, the police and fire department honor guard will stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, the national anthem, and our invocation. Please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now please remain standing as Staff Sergeant Desiree Scarver with the United States Air Force will sing our national anthem. Thank you Staff Sergeant Scarver. And now, the invocation will be offered by Reverend Dr. Carl Brinkley, the Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us bow our heads and let us pray. Gracious and all wise God, our Father, we pause the beginning of this ceremony to invoke your blessings upon these chosen leaders elected by this great city. As our newly-elected mayor and city council members assume their new responsibilities to lead our city, may they be empowered to bear the responsibility of leadership with the utmost of integrity, courage, and humility. May we always see in them dedicated service, and may they always see in us a willingness to give them support. May they be inspired with vision, courage, wisdom, compassion, and may they stand in solidarity with the needy and the poor to defeat prejudice and unify our city. May they be guided to know and to do what is right, and to challenge and to defy anything, anything at all, that would diminish injustice or justice in our city, in this land and in this world. May we all understand that we can never reach our full potential until we become less occupied with what is right, but be determined to do what is right by lifting up the lives of people around us and healing families in our community. May our intentions be sincere, may our labor be selfless, may our beautiful city become a shining example for all who follow. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Dr. Brinkley. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Now at this time, we will begin the administration of the oaths of office. Now, after the administration of each oath, I would like to offer each newly-elected official the opportunity to speak to the group for five minutes. So, we will begin with Mayor-elect Colvin. Please step forward to receive your oath of office administered by the Honorable Michael R. Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, as you come to take your oath, thank you for allowing me to have the privilege to come from the capital city of Raleigh, down here to the all-American city of Fayetteville on this auspicious occasion to render your oath to you. As you have your wonderful family members here, your mother and your daughters, they will be holding the Bible for you, sir, and at this time, Mr. Mayor-elect, I will have you to repeat after me with your left hand on the Bible and right hand raised. I, Mitchell Colvin, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor for the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, so help me God. Mr. Mayor, congratulations.
And now I would like to invite Kathy Jensen of District 1 to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable Claire Hill, Superior Court Judge.
It's a wonderful family, and it's my honor to be able to do this again for you, as I have had two years ago, and for your brother Jimmy. I love you all, and glad to have the whole family here. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Katherine Jensen.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member for the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, so help me God. Congratulations.
Center stage, Madam Counselor.
Okay. Good evening to everyone. Sorry, I was taken a little bit back. I didn't realize I was gonna be hit with this right now. For once, this is my third time up here, and for once, I have prepared a speech, so I was very proud of myself. First of all, I would like to thank Judge Claire Hill. Judge Claire Hill and I are childhood friends, and Claire and I were Girl Scouts together, so it's funny how the circle comes around and that we get to celebrate this together. So, I'm gonna go on with my speech. Good evening. I would like to thank family, friends, and the residents of District 1 for giving me the opportunity to serve you for the next two years. My husband Jerry, you are truly the best. You have always let me live my dreams and made me keep my eye on the goal. There is a reason our family and friends call you St. Jerry, and anybody that knows my husband, he is St. Jerry. My boys, they make me proud every day and share their mom's time to make the difference in the lives of other. With no question, I could never do this job without you. Jerry, Jake, Josh, James, and Dakari, we are a family, and I thank God for you every day. To my brother Jimmy, thank you for your help and your support. It's been a tough four months with the loss of our beautiful mother, but together we've kept strong and we've kept each other along the road. I would also like to thank Ms. May and Ms. Ray and my buddy Trina back there. They have been a complete stable for me and helped me get out there. Gary and Kathy Weller always have been my back, and I do appreciate you. To the youth of Fayetteville, to the Cumberland County Youth Council, can I have a minute and have them stand up, the youth council that we are representing here tonight? Thank you for giving us all the hope in the future and making Fayetteville, Cumberland County, a better place. The Fayetteville Youth Council has started the conversation about our youth and how we need to feed their minds. This is what happens when city and county, school board work together. You are our future, and it is your job to have hope, and it is our job to make sure opportunities make the future of your dreams come true. I've always believed you can't move forward if you don't know where you've come from. For those of you who know me or who have spoken to me know I am very proud of my Greek heritage and the values that I've learned of that heritage in being a Northside kid. This morning, on my way to Pine Forest High School to drop off food for the teachers, yes, I still am a PTA mom, I walked up to the school and the welcome sign reads, "Every day that you go in there, welcome to the Northside, where everyone and everything matters." Two years ago, at Pine Forest graduation, our principal David Colberth made a speech that says it perfect, and here's an excerpt of that speech. I'd like to tell you something. The Northside kids, they're special. You see, they're taught at a young age to believe in things like faith, family, and friends. Northside kids are always ready to serve and almost willing at fault, willing to defend just about any worthy cause. Some come back, some never leave, but just when one of them is in trouble or in need, it's like the pines whisper a call to arms, and before you know it, everyone's back to help. I'm a proven example of that on November 7th. I thank you, District 1. For the past four years, I've taken that passion and helped our city move forward, serving on various boards and commissions. I have learned to fight like I am right and learned to listen like I am wrong. I have grown to love this great city of Fayetteville as much as I do the Northside of Fayetteville. Again, I thank the residents of District 1 for your votes and your committed support. I am here to serve you in this great city, where everyone and everything matters. Thank you.
You know, I gotta say, I had the distinct honor of being the master of ceremonies at this young lady's wedding a few years ago. Twenty-five? My gosh, you're getting old. And now, I would like to invite Tyrone Williams, District 2, to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable Tony S. King, District Court Judge.
It is my privilege and pleasure to administer the oath. Mr. Williams, are you ready?
I'm ready.
I state your name.
I, Tyrone Williams.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member for the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you for all your support and all the ones that's here today to support me. I do have a speech that's written, and I will administer it. Thank y'all so much. Where's lights up here? I want to give honor to God. I realize without God I wouldn't be standing here today. I say again, thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of North Carolina, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I would like to remind the leadership of Fayetteville and Cumberland County and the surrounding areas of our responsibility to be accountable to our citizens, who are our greatest asset. It is our responsibility to put systems in place that will provide better jobs, better education, and training for the better quality of life. The mindset of the citizens has come a long ways, but still, a perspective of a whole must change. We want America to know about a city that is growing by leaps and bounds. We need systems of hope, systems of prosperity, and systems of love across every board. Through these systems, we will be, as leaders, adopt that it's accountability to one another. We have the resources to invest in our cities with the ability to create great ideas through hard work and loving one another to create wealth. Moving forward together will equal change. I thank you, I love you, and I thank you for voting for me, and I will be city councilman, District 2, working hard for you. Thank you for electing me as your city council for District 2.
I would now like to invite Tisha Waddell, District 3, to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable Gail Adams, Superior Court Judge.
It is indeed a privilege and an honor to administer this oath to you, Ms. Waddell, my councilwoman for District 3. Thank you so much for this performance. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tisha S. Waddell.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member for the city of North Carolina, sorry, for the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, so help me God.
Before they leave, I want to introduce you guys to my family. This is my husband Larry, this is my daughter Raven, this is my daughter Peyton, this is my mother Carolyn, and this is my father Eddie Ray. So I did not prepare a speech, but I do want to ask my immediate family that's in the audience if you will please just stand up for me. So, I was raised someone who was taught the value of family, and it is because of that value and because of my family that I stand here today, and so I thank each of you. Thank you for traveling to come and be here with us today. To the citizens in District 3, if you are in the room and you are able, please stand up. The seat that I will occupy does not belong to me, it belongs to you. And I will work diligently to make sure that you always are well-represented while I sit in that seat. I can do nothing alone. I need the support, I need the encouragement, and I need the voice of the people that I represent. I have said from the beginning, it's about us, it's not about me, and so I ask you to help me continue that by making sure that you are communicating with me. Mayor Colvin, I got your back. We have great work to do in this city, great work. We have some obstacles to overcome, but we have a running start, and we are going to get some things done for you all in this city. One more thing, Mayor Colvin, thank you for not leaving me a mess in District 3. With God's grace, I will serve you well. Please pray for me if you pray to God in Jesus' name. Keep me lifted, keep me covered, and continue to communicate with me. Have a great night.
This is starting to look like one of my family get-togethers, the hugs. I love this. I'm Italian, we're huggers. I would now like to invite DJ Hair, District 4, to receive the oath of office administered by Ms. Sandra Jones-Morrissey, Notary Public.
It seemed like I wouldn't be nervous, but I am.
Good evening. It is indeed an honor to represent you on this most historical occasion. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, and know that as you follow, God and Mr. Colvin, we will follow you. Please place your hand on the microphone. Please repeat after me. I.
I, Darrell J. Hair.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as council member for the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, so help me God. God be the glory, and congratulations.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Come on now, we're at celebration. Hello, everyone. As I was just saying, this is starting to be my ninth term. I didn't think that I would be nervous, but something happened to me in my four years off. There was a submission that took place in my life, and that submission is walking more and stronger in the Word of Jesus Christ. So, whenever you see me or my wife, please know the kind of conversations you're gonna have. to have are most definitely going to be uplifting and going forward for the city of Fayetteville, but also know they're going to always be Christ-based. Amen? Ephesians 1 and 11 says that God knew us, that He predestined us, He formed us, and He purposed us. I truly believe and accept that God destined me and put me where I am today. All of the years that I've served, I believe that, and I accept that I will be the best, the very, very best that He has for me, for you. I will continue to be your advocate. I will continue to be your drum major. You can call on me anytime, always know that. I've had a lot of people that helped me, and I'm not going to ask them to stand, but at least I'm going to ask them to wave their hands all over this auditorium. Yeah, yeah. Thank the Lord for my children that are here. Out of our five, I think we have three, and thank you, those of you that are in District Four, for once again trusting me with your vote, and that means a lot, and I thank you for that. But I could not go to my seat without remembering baby girl. She was just up here with me. Just like God predestined a purpose on my life, God predestined a purpose on your life for you to help me and help us fulfill the purpose and get to the purpose where we are tonight. And I applaud you, baby, for standing with me, for supporting me, and for going to all of those doors when a lot of times it was just you and I. So tonight, I accept the calls. I accept the pledge, and you can truly believe that I will serve you to the best ability that God has given me, and I won't let you down, and I won't be a disappointment. And before I go, I've got something special. Chief, I went out and got something special. I was trying to kind of keep it, but baby, that is for you. She loves flowers. Thank you, baby. Thank you, District Four. Thank you, Fayetteville. Amen?
See, I know that this council will never have any kind of disagreements. A little skepticism in that laughter there. I would like to now invite Johnny Dawkins, District Five, to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable Stephen Stokes, District Court Judge.
My mother-in-law Doris Palmer, my daughter Jill, my lovely bride Donna, my father-in-law Richard Palmer, my younger sister Dawn, and the brother I never had, Gary Cooper, Judge Stokes.
Well, let me just first say it's my pleasure to administer the oath to my good friend Johnny Dawkins. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the legacy of his great father, who had the longest tenure as mayor in the city, one J.L. Dawkins, who served from 1987 to 2000. And no doubt he planted the seed for service in your heart, and we're thankful that you're back and you're back in the saddle. So God bless you for that. If you put your left hand above and raise your right hand. I, Johnny Dawkins.
I, Johnny Dawkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws.
And the Constitution and the laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
For the city of Fayetteville.
For the city of Fayetteville.
And North Carolina.
And North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I want to thank the Lord for this honor and this opportunity to serve you again. Thank you, Judge Stokes, for administering the oath. I want to thank my bride of 35 years, Donna Dawkins, for all she has done for me and our family. Thank you, baby. Thank you to the citizens of District Five for your support. I look forward to serving you and the entire city of Fayetteville. When you need me, please call, text, tweet, email, or send me a message on Facebook. I want to thank my in-laws, Richard and Doris Palmer. Thanks to my sister Dawn Casey. Thank you to the brother I never had, Gary Cooper. Thank you to all my family, my campaign committee, my poll workers, and all my friends, Alan and C. Campbell, Jason Poole, Stuart Augustine, Rick Perko. A special thanks to my son, Johnny Dawkins IV. We call him Jay. I'm very proud to be his dad. Of course, I miss my dad, Mayor Dawkins, and my mother, Mary Ann Dawkins. Mom and dad, I hope, I hope to make you proud of me. And of course, a very special thanks to my daughter Jill. She was my dad's hero. It wasn't easy on her, fighting her first brain tumor at age three, and then again at age eight, the chemo, the radiation, the 16 doctors. She's a miracle. You just saw her up here, and I thank God every day for Jill Dawkins. Thank you, my daughter. Love you. Folks, we've got a great leadership team up here, very impressive. And three more to come up. Please pray for our city and its leaders today and always. Thank you.
I would now like to invite William Joseph Leon Crisp, District Six, to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable Talmidge S. Baggett Jr., District Court Judge.
Bill, congratulations. You and I first met back during a difficult time for the city of Fayetteville during a very large annexation.
I think you were the one that coined the expression "the big bang."
I did. You have been an articulate voice, friend, not just for that 40,000 that came in, but for this whole city. And for your service, sir, we congratulate and thank you. I, William Joseph Leon Crisp.
I, William Joseph Leon Crisp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
For the city of Fayetteville.
For the city of Fayetteville.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Those two young ladies are my daughters. The one in red is my baby girl, Sonia and Sylvia. My sons are engaged tonight in affairs, one of whom is at Chapel Hill dealing with a bereaved family that lost a child yesterday via suicide. Good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
This is my sixth time, and I don't have a speech prepared because I'm long-winded, but tonight I'm going to be short. I have to say thank you to Judge Baggett. This is the fifth of six times that he has administered the oath of office to me, and I'm very appreciative of that. Senator Rand, I see him, he told me, "Don't ever say this is the last time," but this is the last time. It is with some sadness tonight that my campaign manager, William Autry, went on to glory at age 87. My strongest supporter in District Six, Mr. Joseph Die, went on to glory at age 106. And so I miss them. But I do believe that they are looking down, and I do believe that because my Bible tells me so. To the voters in District Six and to you, the voters and residents of Fayetteville, I will continue to fight a junkyard dog if I think what that dog is doing is to the detriment of this city that we love. Four years ago, I had a protege. His name, Mitch Colvin. I think I did a good job. I no longer have Mitch Colvin as a protege, but he has my unwavering support as mayor of this city. I have a new protege. Her name is Councilwoman Tisha Waddell. I am dedicated and devoted to you, the citizens of this city. While I say that District Six is my district, the entire city is my beat, my concern is for every citizen in this city of Fayetteville, North Carolina. Call me from 7:00 to 11:00, Monday through Saturday. Don't call me on Sunday.
You should hear him when he writes a speech. I would now like to invite Larry Wright Sr., District Seven, to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable Stephen Stokes, District Court Judge.
I'd like to just first say that I consider Larry Wright a dear and trusted friend. Among other things, we've got these things in common, that we're both Army veterans. We're both Pluridians. We're both Pluridians, and military brought us here to Fayetteville, and we decided to stay and to serve in our respective capacities, and it's my honor to administer the oath of office to my homeboy, Larry Wright. I, Larry Wright.
I, Larry Wright.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilmember.
As councilmember.
Of the city of Fayetteville.
Of the city of Fayetteville.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
I want to introduce my wife, Deborah, my daughter-in-law, my daughter-in-law Latoya, and my son, Anthony, my grandson, and my granddaughter, LaKaylee, and also this is Anthony Jr. All right, thank you. Wow. I first want to say thank God in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ that helped me to make it to this point. Next, I want to thank my wife, Deborah, that stood by my side throughout this entire ordeal of a campaign and the last three campaigns, and I want to say a few things about her a little later. I want to thank my campaign team. Veronica Jones is my communication director. I tell you what, she is a beast, and she pushed me and her and Wayne Smalls and also those that worked tirelessly on the polls to help us to achieve those goals. I want to thank all of you. Mayor Stokes, not Mayor Stokes, but Judge Steve Stokes that swore me in, my homeboy. I had a sort of dilemma between him and Judge Tyler Mack because she's my girl and she's sworn me in for the last two times, but when we were all together, they were like brothers and sisters, so I felt all right. So we want to thank her. She was one of my instructors at Shaw University. My son is a practical joker, y'all, and they drove all the way from Charlotte. That's my youngest son. My oldest son, Larry, he's working. He couldn't be here tonight. So I'm sitting here, and he's coming from Charlotte, and he's late. So I'm waiting for him to text me to say, "We made it." So I'm waiting for this text. My wife is like, every minute, "He made it yet? He made it yet?" Like, no, quit asking me if he made it. I'm already nervous, right? And so the text comes in, "Dad," you know, because I had to pass for him, you know, the part. "Listen, the man gave my pass to somebody else, and he's out here, and he's not letting us in, and, you know, it's a disturbance out here, and they have me and my wife handcuffed out here in the corner." my wife handcuffed out here in the corner." Y'all. So I'm already in the middle, and, you know, all these people I got to get through, and I'm thinking already, how are me and my wife gonna get up to the stage and be cool with it, right? So he makes this text, and I jump up. In my mind, my daughter-in-law, Latoya, she's like six months pregnant out there handcuffed, and I know him, he's like a tyrant, and I said, "Let me go and save my children." And so I get up and scoot my way through and interrupt these people, and I'm halfway down the hallway, and he says, "Larry." I said, "I heard somebody call me." And I look, and they're sitting over here. Y'all pray for me. The boy is crazy.
I like him.
I'm gonna get you, Ann, I'm gonna get you for that. I ain't gonna never forget that one right there. But I want to thank all of you, again, in District Seven, for supporting me and voting for me and just sticking there all the way to the end. We have a lot of work to do in District Seven and a lot of work to do in the city of Fayetteville. I am so proud to say that we have a mayor in Mitch Colvin, and I'm gonna support him one-hundred percent. And sometimes change is good, and we have a great council, and I'm so excited about the next two years and what we're able to accomplish. With your help and believing in us and supporting us and sticking with us, we can achieve greatness in the city of Fayetteville, because the potential we have as an all-American city is so awesome. I love this city. I served in the military at Fort Bragg three tours. I retired and decided to stay here, even though my wife, you know, she was from Vander out there in the country. I call her Deborah Jean. It got one light, and that's a blinking red light, y'all. But I love the country. I love Fayetteville, and I love the citizens of this great city. I hope I didn't miss anybody. If I did, charge it to my head and not my heart. God bless you. Let's go to work.
I would now like to invite Theodore W. Moan, District Eight, to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable Mitch Colvin, the mayor of the city of Fayetteville.
Go to work. Ted put me to work already, huh? So honored to be here and have a tremendous amount of respect for my colleague here who have served for the last four years. He's always a very analytical, you can depend on the information he brings you, he does his homework, and it's just a pleasure. Also have to acknowledge former councilwoman, Val Applewhite. Mr. Moan, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Repeat after me. I.
I, Theodore William Moan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As council member for the city of Fayetteville.
As council member for the city of Fayetteville.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the eighth speaker tonight, so I'm gonna keep it a little short. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight, being active in the political process, going out and voting for the candidate of your choice, and because of your active participation, you see what we have up here on stage. I'd like to... I must give a shout-out to Val, my friend, former council teammate, Westover Wolverine parent, kids went to school together, West Side. And a special thanks goes out to all the city employees. I had mentioned it a couple of years ago, up here, we're policy setters, you know, we approve budgets, but then each of our city employees, no matter where they work, are the ones that actually go out and make things happen day in and day out and keep our city When you look out at the audience, you're the reason we're all up here. You know, we volunteer our time, we volunteer our energy, we get guidance input from you, we run those ideas past the city staff to see if it's possible. And, you know, we have a whole new team up here this year. We got a new teammate, but what I enjoy about this team is every one of them brings something individual, perspectives, and that collectively, we could come together and share what we all know from where we came from, where we work, what parts of the city, what we hear from for you. So in closing, I hope each and every one of you, your families, our entire wonderful blended community, be blessed. Thank God, and thank God, keep you all safe, and I appreciate you, again, taking your time to be here tonight.
And now, I would like to invite James W. Arp, District Nine, to receive the oath of office administered by the Honorable James Floyd Ammons, Jr., Senior Superior Court Judge.
I'm sorry, we need Kylie Medlin to come down here.
Come on, Kylie.
Come on, Kylie. I'm a judge, you gotta do what I say. One of Jim's sons is not able to be here tonight. So he sent his fiancee?
His girlfriend. Probably not too far away.
It's a surprise. Tell her being to stay home next year, too, if he sends her. Why don't you introduce your family, Jim?
Well, thank you. I'd like to introduce my beautiful and lovely wife, Tammy. We've been married, it'll be thirty years, the nineteenth of this month. I'm very thankful she could be here. She was supposed to be traveling Oklahoma City for business, but she made other arrangements, and very thankful for that. And then I have, I'm gonna step right here, then I have my youngest son, Jared. He's a freshman at Campbell University. I'm pretty proud of that. My oldest son, Nathan, is a graduate of Campbell, he just graduated, and for his stand-in, he sent the beautiful Kylie Medlin, and we're certainly glad to have Kylie with us tonight. Thank you.
All right, if you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me. I, James W. Arp.
I, James W. Arp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a council member.
As a council member.
For the city of Fayetteville.
For the city of Fayetteville.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God. Congratulations, my friend.
I'm gonna steal my bottle and water. I got kinda dry-mouthed listening to all those speeches, and so I want to thank Ted. Ted advocated his excess minutes to me, and so I'll be faithful and use as many of them as I can. I'm joking. First and foremost, I want to thank the good Lord. We have much to be thankful for in this city. We have much to be thankful for with all the blessings we have, and I certainly count them every day. God is good. Amen. And I want to thank all the elected officials who are here tonight. We have distinguished members of our General Assembly from the Senate, the House. I want to thank the former members that are here, Senator Rand, always a pleasure to have you. I want to thank our judicial delegations that are here tonight who have served to administer the oaths, and I want to thank some of our county commissioners who are here. Thank you for being with us, it's always a pleasure to see you and to serve with you. I want to thank the council behind me. We have a good team. You know how I know we have a good team? Because you picked them. Some of you folks probably do the fantasy draft thing, I don't, I believe in the real draft, and we had a real draft, okay? And we got a good team, and Mitch Colvin's our quarterback. So Mr. Mayor, when we go to the huddle, we're looking for you to call the right plays, and it's our job to execute them, right? And you know what? That's what leadership's about. You know, Bill Crisp, Sergeant Major, where are you, sir? I hate following him. We're gonna shuffle the order, and Bill's gonna be last, and I'm gonna get to go first one year. But Bill knows, you know, in the military, you have what we call change of commands. Sometimes that's every two years, and when you have a change of command, the responsibility of the command is to rally with the new commander and to make good things happen, to carry on the mission of the unit, and I can tell you, we're gonna do that. Listen, we've got some new team members, Tishawadell, Tyrone Williams, thank you, glad to have you with us. We got a couple of old hands that have come back, Johnny Dawkins and DJ Hair. You know, they served with Lafayette. We got Bill Crisp, he served with Moses. And we got two steady hands of experience with Ted Moan and Larry Wright, and so I'm really excited. Listen, folks, there's some great things going on in our city, and if you've been downtown and you've seen the construction that's underway of the Rowan Street Bridge, tighten up your belt, more is getting ready to get underway. The new baseball stadium's gonna start. I want to thank the previous mayor and the previous council for the vision to make that work and to make that happen. Ladies, thank you very much. That new development's gonna represent a hundred million dollars of economic development coming to the city of Fayetteville. That's significant for these young people sitting over here with the Fayetteville Youth Council, because, listen, if we want our city to continue to thrive and to grow, it's just like your church, you gotta have young people, okay? At some point, us old folks are going home, and that's okay, but you gotta have young people. We've gotta create the conditions for our young people to come back. A hundred million dollars of economic development, it's gonna change the landscape of the lower end of Bragg Boulevard, Merkison Road, Hay Street, and other areas in that vicinity, and we're really excited about that, and it's just the start. Thank you. We got a thirty-five million dollar Parks and Recreation Bond, okay? And that's pretty significant for all our seniors, two senior centers that are coming. I want to thank Kathy Jensen, who's the chairwoman of that committee, Bill Crisp and Kirk Deviere, our former council member, for the great work on that project. And guess what? That's pretty exciting, and here's another component that's gonna get built, and that's a new sports and athletic complex. Why is that significant? Because sports tourism is a seven-billion-dollar industry in our nation and growing. Yeah, and every weekend, there's tourism dollars that go up and down I-95, going to other communities, but not in the future. We're gonna bring that money here. And that's economic development dollars, that's money that'll help us fund other parks programs, that's money that we can use for our kids and the parks programs, but it's hotels, it's restaurants, it's shops, it's new development, and hopefully, if we put it up along the Military Business Park, it'll change the dynamics of the economic situation for Shaw Road, Bragg Boulevard, and Merkison Road. This is a great opportunity for our city, and we're gonna work hard to make it come true. But that's not the only thing. We've got some tall orders in hand, we've got a stormwater issue that we've gotta face, we gotta keep pushing to get sidewalks across this city west Fayetteville, okay? We've got some work that we've gotta do, and let me just tell you something. I was out for a walk yesterday, every weekend I take long walks, I was out for a seven-mile walk yesterday, and I saw a beautiful sight, and that was a City of Fayetteville bus running on Sunday, and that's a great thing. And I want to thank the previous council for doing that, and listen, it's important that we have transportation in our city, and it's important that we figure out how to make it regional transportation, because people need a way to work, they need a way to shop, and they need a way to go see loved ones. I ran into an older gentleman the other day at the ribbon-cutting of our new multimodal center, and the only way he has to get back and forth to see his spouse, because he can no longer drive, is the bus, and that's a great, great opportunity. So glad to see we have bus service on Sunday. Now I'm gonna close, before my tongue completely sticks to the top of my mouth, I want to close by saying thank you to my family. You can't do this, you can't serve, everybody up here knows that. You can't serve without your family being behind you. Listen, we don't serve for the money, we don't serve for the perks, we serve because we've got a heart to help other people. And I want to thank you and the voters of District Nine for the opportunity to serve. I'm proud to be in District Nine, I'm proud of all the great things that are going on over there, but I'm more proud to be from the city of Fayetteville and all the great things that are happening here. And my commitment to you is simply this, I'm gonna fight every day to make this city the best place it can be for every citizen who lives within her boundaries, and I'm gonna fight to make it a place that people want to come from outside and join our team and live here and be a part of this great community, and I'm gonna fight to make it a place that our children, when they finish their education, whether it be in high school or college, want to come back here and have a business, raise a family, and call Fayetteville home. The greatness of this city is you, the people, and that's why, when I retired from the military, I came back home. I love this city, I love our residents and our citizens, I appreciate each and every one of you. God bless, happy holidays, and thank you.
So as they get ready to go to work, I will take this moment to mention that the first time I ever spoke before a city council was nineteen seventy-two, forty-five years ago. And that was up on the second floor of the old city hall on Green Street, now it's fascinate you, and I've got to tell you, Fayetteville today is such a better, it was good then, but it is such a much better place today, and I think it's only gonna get better with this team on our side. Give them a big round of applause, please.
Thank you, Mr. Malzone. I'd like to call the December fourth, twenty-seventeen Fayetteville City Council meeting to order item two point zero is to pledge allegiance. We've done that. Item three point zero is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Have a motion by council member here, second by council member Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, there are none, the motion carries. Item four point zero one is the election of the mayor pro temp. Council, I look to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, that sounded good, Mr. Mayor, didn't it? Mr. Mayor, if a motion is in order, I move that Theodore William Moan be the mayor pro temp for the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina.
I second that. Mayor, I second that motion.
Mayor, I second that motion.
Counsel, we have a motion by council member Crisp, a second by council member Hair, to elect council member Theodore Mohn as the mayor pro temp of the city of Fayetteville. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, there are none. Motion carries. Mr. Mohn? Forward to working with you, sir. Madam Pluck, that was a unanimous vote. Item 4.02, mayor address.
John, you've been preempted by the mayor.
Good evening.
Evening.
Wow. What a day. First, I would like to thank all of you for coming to share with us in this special night for the mayor and the council inauguration. Let's give these guys a round of applause for this great team. First, I certainly have to give an honor to God, who is the only reason why I'm standing behind this podium today. Truly, truly, His... You know, Matthew said that with man, things are impossible. With God, all things are possible. And I certainly know that I am only here because of Him. I'd like to also take this time to recognize that many elected officials tonight, I wanted to make sure that we reached out to our county commissioners, our school board members, our judges, any elected officials from this jurisdiction or another. Can you stand for just a moment? Absolutely. Our state delegation, give them a round of applause. I have the mayor from Greenville, North Carolina. So far and near, we thank you so much for joining us tonight. I certainly have to thank my children, my girls, Portia in her absence, Ashley and Myra, my beautiful daughters. Thank you so much for the sacrifices and allowing your dad to pursue his dream and to follow his destiny. And one of the council members said it best, that you cannot do this without the support of your family. And they have sacrificed so much. I need to give them a round of applause. Thank you, ladies. To my parents, Ms. Elva Ernestine Colvin, and she'll get me later, and my mother, my father, Mr. Henry Colvin, and he cannot be with us tonight, but he, I'm sure, is here in spirit. I want to thank you so much for teaching us great values early in life and hard work. And you all worked hard and diligently to make sure that me and my brothers, me and Michael, had it, and we understood the value of hard work growing up. So I want to thank you. And let's give her a round of applause for that. Also like to thank my baby brother, Michael, who at times agitated me, but he pushed me and made me press on on days when I felt like sitting still. He pressed me, and I thank him for it. And I thank and acknowledge my other brothers and sisters as well. And also to the greatest campaign team in the world. I thank all of my volunteers and all of the pole workers and canvases and folks that did phone banking and people that just stepped up and said, what can I do to be a part of this? Tonight is your night, and this is your victory tonight. So I thank you so much. I see members of my staff, Colvin's funeral home, Affordable Cremations. I thank you so much for the support you've given me to allow me to break away and give my public service. So I thank you and acknowledge you tonight. And also, would be remiss if I didn't thank the previous mayor, Nat Robertson, and the previous mayors who served in this capacity. Also, former council members Kurt Deviere, Chalmers McDougal, Bobby Hurst. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve beside you guys for the last few years. And I thank you for the public service. So you all know firsthand that public service is not an easy job. So we thank you. And to the new team, Fayetteville City Council, I'm excited. We're going to do great things in this city. Together, I can promise you that we will work together to build bridges. And I need you, and certainly I know that I can count on you. My fellow citizens, I stand here tonight honored, but more importantly, I'm humbled and thankful for the trust that you bestowed in me. And upon during this past election, I would like to ensure every resident of this city, regardless of who you voted for, I promise to be a voice for you. I realize that I stand on the shoulders of many others who took this oath before me tonight in the greatest city in the nation. And truly, I can say that I am truly a product of this community, an example of what a community of faith and love and forgiveness can produce. I went to E. Smith High School with the mighty Golden Bulls. Went on to John Tyler Mortuary School in Chester, Virginia, to learn my craft. Came back and I graduated here from Fayetteville State University, the Broncos. A member of Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity. Any of my brothers are here today. And I am a member of the Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church and the Carl Lee Brinkley, who handles my spiritual guidance. And 20 years ago, I made a conscious decision, over 20 years ago, after I graduated Mortuary School to return home and to work in my family's business, I decided to start and raise a family in this great city. And therefore, I'm passionate about its future, and I know what we can achieve together. Folks, we are in the midst of a monumental moment in this community. The winds of change have blown open the doors of opportunity across this city. We stand here on the shores of unlimited possibilities. We have an opportunity to build a city that is inclusive of all its citizens. Young and old, rich and poor, black, white, Hispanic, Native American, and Asian, and all races, gay and straight, disabled, not disabled, we must include everyone into what we do. And we have to realize that diversity is a strength and not a weakness. We are stronger because of our differences and our inclusion. And tonight, I stand with you and I ask this council that we stand as a united community, one city. And I ask my colleagues that, as we work tirelessly over the next two years, that we promote that message that we are one city and one community representing the good of all. And so we invite all of you who are available on Friday, December 8th, at 8:30 at City Hall, we're going to have a unity service. It's going to be our first order of business to show that we are going to make this community one community, that we're going to bridge the divides. Because together, we have many areas to address, such as creating pathways and opportunities for our citizens, rebuilding older neighborhoods, increasing the availability of affordable housing, and bringing industry into this community to put our citizens to work. Six months ago, when I began this journey, I made a promise to the people of this city that if you trusted me with your vote, I would work tirelessly to build and strengthen the relationships with City Hall and its other elected officials. This past November, many of you agreed that that is the change that you were looking for. It is time for collaborative leadership out of City Hall, and that I am asking this council to work with me. Let's tear down those territorial walls of division. Let's build bridges to our county commissioners, our school board members, our state delegation. Because as local elected officials, we have a common goal of making life better for this entire community. So therefore, one of the first orders of business in the coming days, I will speak with this council about reestablishing the subcommittee to work on the new Joint 911 Emergency Operations Center, to work with our county commissioners to get that done for the citizens of Fayetteville. Look forward to continuing to work with the county in our joint economic development efforts through the Fayetteville-Cumlin County Economic Development Corporation to recruit industry and to bring jobs into our community. I look forward to working with Robo and this board. Then we must work together, the county commissioners, the visitors bureau, to create a brand for our community in a positive way. The days of Fayettenam are coming to an end in Fayetteville. I look forward to working with Commissioner Charles Evans to continue in the expungement, and Representative Elmer Floyd, and District Attorney Billy West, so that we can create pathways to success and second chances for those who have paid their debts to society but need to find gainful employment to take care of themselves and their family. I know that the baseball committee is in good hands with Councilmember Arp. And I look forward to him continuing to work with county commissioners on baseball and other quality of life projects, museums, performing arts, or whatever the order of the day is to increase the quality of life in our community. Like Parks and Rec and community development, we can work together on affordable housing and disaster relief. Matthew, we worked well together. We stepped up in the midst of a crisis, and we showed really what the goodness of this community are. So we have important issues before us, and I'm confident over the next two years, with collaboration, we can do it. Secondly, we must work together with our colleges and our universities and our school board and our school system and our leadership at Fort Bragg to strengthen, train, and develop our workforce in Fayetteville. We have to have an attractable workforce to attract livable wage jobs, and we must show them that we are ready and able when these opportunities come our way. In the coming weeks, in the first order of business in January, I'll ask council to support the first ever workforce summit, where we bring all of our different partners to the table. We work on soft skill training and bridging those gaps and employee-employer pipeline building and strengthening. And we learn how to leverage our steady stream of workers from the veterans and the retirees that are excellent in our military. We need to work on training vocational skills to teach masons and carpenters and welders and auto mechanics how to take care of themselves. We need to close the gap on high-tech jobs in industry that has escaped us, cybersecurity and coding and STEM. We have a lot of work to do. And most of all, one of my council members said it best, Councilmember Arp, that we have to retain and attract the next generation. Our millennials are leaving our community by droves. My daughters, I tell this story all the time, and they'll get me later. I have two that went off to college, and one is working on her master's degree in medical science in Mississippi. I have one that's a junior at Howard University, but they said, Dad, when we finish, I don't know if we're coming back. And I said, that is heartbreaking, but that means I have work to do. And I'm encouraged every day that we're going to make Fayetteville a destination place for our next generation. And finally, we know that it is imperative that we work and we correct our infrastructure. Last year, Matthew and other storms showed us that that was one of the worst years for natural disasters and flooding this community's ever seen. We must make a conscious commitment to update our inadequate stormwater system. No longer is it acceptable to have a community with sidewalks on one side of the street. We must explore the latest innovation initiatives with AARP and the health services to build a healthier community and increase the walkability of Fayetteville. We must, it is imperative that we create a better plan for maintaining our roads and improving our traffic flow. Any of you that have tried to traverse across this city early morning or at rush hour can relate to this statement that we need to plan how to move our vehicles and our citizens around this city. And I think that over the next few years, as mayor, I will continue to lobby our state and federal delegation to expand our public transportation. This is important. From increasing the commercial flights to our airport, to expanding our rail services to include light rail that connects us to areas like Raleigh. I had a very interesting conversation with Debbie Collins, the Director of Public Transportation for the North Carolina Department of Transportation. She said, did you know that nearly 4,000 of your citizens travel every day from the city of Fayetteville to downtown Raleigh? We have people that are commuting out of this community to that community, and we need to make it available and easy, and we've got to do that. The potential for those two markets working together is unlimited. But we know, counsel, that with our current budget, these things are impossible and impractical. For us to improve our infrastructure, we need funding. We need vision to make that happen. And it is my goal over the next few years to propose to you, the voters, a general obligation bond or other financing options to take care of our stormwater, our street paving, our sidewalks, and our transportation system. And finally, as I take my seat, we can all agree that we have an incredible opportunity. You have an elected and incredible team of leaders. But even with all of that, we cannot do this alone. We need you, because this is a partnership. And I'll finish with this in the words of the late, great Nelson Mandela. "Action without vision is only passing time. Vision without action is merely daydreaming. But vision with action can change the world." Let's change the world, Fayetteville. Again, God bless you. Look forward to working with you. God bless.
And now our benediction will be by the Reverend Al Bryce of Covenant Love Church.
I don't know about you, but I'm excited. The Bible says, where there is no vision, the people perish. We've got a vision, not to perish, but to prosper and to grow. And I am applauding it. God bless you. Let's pray. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Father God, we thank you for each person that was elected, our mayor and our city council members, and as they have begun tonight on their new journey, I pray that too you would guide them and direct them as they guide and direct and manage the city of Fayetteville. We graciously ask that you will give them unity of vision and clarity of purpose. We pray that you would fill them with your wisdom and grant them discernment and discretion in their leadership. Help them to serve faithfully the people of our city who elected them with character and dignity. I pray that you would bless and protect them and their families. And I pray that you bless and prosper and protect our city, Fort Bragg, our military men and women, and our law enforcement officers. And I pray that you would watch over and protect each and every citizen of this great city. Let our city be a lighthouse to other cities of racial equality and unity. And let your peace and your prosperity reign in this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Counsel, look to you for adjournment.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the retirement of the colors.
Counsel, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Wright. God bless you.
The meeting is now adjourned. Please join us for refreshments.